Are we ready? Can we wait for you? Alright, we're gonna call the city council meeting to order at six ten on March twenty-third. Can we get roll call, man?
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Callaway?
Present.
Ms. Van Buren?
Present.
Mr. Kincaid?
Present.
Thank you.
Alright, just for the record, Councilwoman Poplar is in Germany, and that's why she's not here tonight. So, we have Councilman Nelson lead us into place.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, first item on the agenda is adoption of the minutes. Is there a motion? Move approval?
Support.
Moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Um, Mr. President, on the last minutes that we discussed with the three upstensions, I went back and I reviewed the, um, YouTube. And on YouTube, even though it was said that I supported Ms. Van Buren and the other ones, they were not separated. So, through you to Janelle, that record was accurate. Um, Ms. Brown, that record was accurate because the verbal communications was supported, but they were all moved at one time and was not separated. So, are those minutes? I've seen two sets of minutes on the agenda this weekend. Are we moving both sets and is that one of them?
We're moving March ninth and February ninth.
Um, Janelle, do you remember, was that one of them? Okay, so that would be fine. Thank you. And so I was wrong on that one. That one was not separate.
Any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Uh, next item on the agenda is petitions and unofficial communications, along with communications from city officials. We'll order those placed on file without objection.
Mr. President?
Which brings us to appointments.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mays?
The petitions and unofficial communications, um, the... One that I looked at last night, the final report from, um, Viola, that would be the report that we got. We just haven't heard from them.
Right.
And then, um, when you said we would go to appointments, um, communications, petitions, and unofficial businesses, are you skipping communications from city officials?
No, I included that.
Beg your pardon?
I included it.
And the same thing?
Yep.
Alright.
Appointments, we have none, no licenses, no bonds. We do have a few resolutions, one five zero one six five.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move one five zero one six five for approval.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Kincaid and supported by Councilman Nelson. Is there any discussion?
Um, that's the public hearing for the, um, rehabilitation exemption. Correct?
It's one five zero one six five.
One six five. So that's a, um, approving a public hearing for a rehabilitation exemption district. URC, that's Uptown Redevelopment Corporation. Um, all I'm getting at, Mr. President, when we read these for the public's sake, can you, you know, say what it is? And I can support the public hearing. I'm still, um, when we get to that point of resolution, I hope to hear from Uptown because I got a lot of questions. But I will probably support the public hearing and we'll take it from there.
Any further discussion on setting a public hearing date? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no. It's one five one six five.
Next item on the agenda is one five zero one six six, Councilman Kincaid.
Mr. President, um, I'd like to have this separated out and table it until after the public speaking. This is a, uh, resolution, um, to grant an application, uh, City of Flint, Michigan Department of Natural Resources for long way park improvements. And prior to adopting this, uh, resolution, I'd like to make sure if there's any comments from the public that they had the opportunity to address this body prior to us voting on this resolution. So I'd move to table one five zero one six six.
There's motion to table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, through you to the council, we had a, um, ad hoc committee meeting on rules. And prior to the emergency manager order, the public always had a chance to, um, speak before we took action. So, um, Mr. Freeman proposed that we put a timeframe in, and, um, we'll meet again Thursday for all those who wanna look at rules changes. It was Councilman, um, Winfrey, myself, and Councilman Freeman. And so what Mr. Kincaid has proposed here for the public, I wholeheartedly support public weighing in before we take action. And if we're successful in our rule changes, then that will become, again, common practice. Um, I've always thought we could do this even under emergency manager order. So I don't know if this is a precedent, but this should just be a way of business. Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to table? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no to table.
And the motion carries. Uh, we do have a couple of items that were brought out of our Public Works Committee, one five zero two hundred. Is there a motion for that?
I move approval, Mr. President.
It's been moved. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, this sets a public hearing, uh, for the pilot projects, Salem Housing Community Development Corporation, Meadowway Hills, Low Income Housing Tax Credit Project Ordinance. And the public hearing is set for what, Monday, April thirteenth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Next item on the agenda is one five zero two zero one.
Mr. President? Mr. President, this is a resolution to do-
Are you making a motion, Councilman?
Yeah. This is a resolution to do, um, work on DuPont Street from Stewart to Carpenter Road, and, uh, so move this resolution.
Support. Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President?
Mr. Mays?
Um, I still wanna say, um, to Mr. Croft and others that, um, the comments that I made in committee meeting as it relates to the work on DuPont between Stewart and Carpenter Road would look, sound like it's gonna be extensive. I know they say they'll replace and look at vows, but I'm gonna urge them to look at a little more of the infrastructure than just vows because I would hate for them to tear that street up and then have to tear it up again. As people have told me over and over, the infrastructure's aged. So, um, I'll be voting in support of this. But as a caveat, I add those comments to echo what I did in the back room in committee meeting out on the public floor.
Is there any further discussion on one five zero two zero one? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on one five zero two zero one.
And the motion carries. Uh, we do have one additional resolution, which is add-on number one. It's a resolution authorizing Genesee Conservation District to contract, contract with hazardous tree removals and manage the city's street tree activities through June thirty fifteen.
Mr. President, I would move add-on number one, and I would also like to add that in the resolution that the funding for this project will come out of the, um, major and local street funds and not out of the general fund.
Motion, uh, has been made. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there further discussion?
Um, Mr. President?
Councilman Mays?
That money will come out of which funds?
The street, major, and, uh, local streets.
Major and local streets.
These are for trees that are in the right of way.
And that's the one for the trees in the right of way. That's the one where we had a little discussion on, and we are waiting for a definition of emergency. So, um, I don't know if you want me to make the referral now, but I really want some detail because I can see a lot of discretion as it relates to the spending of these monies based upon who's calling the shot, on which tree is which. And this ain't a whole lot of money. So, you know, without, you know, I don't know. I, I, I might can wait till later to make the referral, but that's what I talked about. And I'm still concerned about the process as this money is being spent across the city and who's defining which tree is what and when.
Any further discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Callaway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on add-on number one.
And the motion carries. We don't have any liquor licenses or ordinances, which brings us to public speaking. We're gonna go through the public speakers right now?
Well-
And as a reminder, the public has three minutes to speak. Let's try to refrain from attacking, uh, any individuals or institutions. And, you know, the bottom line is, is can we all just be civil?
Mr. President, how many speakers do we have?
I don't, I have no idea.
Can you tell me?
We'll, we'll get to it. Let me call the first speaker and then I'll have her go through them.
Alright.
Uh, first speaker?
The first speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell?
Mr. Mitchell? Good evening.
Uh, Mr. President, I'm R.L. Mitchell. I'm here on time like you adjusted, uh, just, adjusted me to be on, on time like last time. And, uh, I'm, I'm speaking on that, our officer, since he made that discovery in, inside the, uh, investigation, stuff in, over the city been going all kind of ways, and I've been... And see, like, I've been right in the midst of it, just ask the situation happened. Like, for instance, I was at McDonald's on Pas, Pasadena and Pe- and Clyton Road. Just after I left out of there, the place got robbed. And, and another place over on the dollar store, I was just out of there, the place got robbed by some, the same peoples and everywhere I go. What? Who you?
Go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
But, like, the chief doing a whole lot of investigation in the city, doing good because I found out he... Seemed like he dug up some stuff because they done stole some of the weapons and, and using the same guns to do murders around this city. And the chief from Detroit coming up here. Mr. President, are you paying attention to me while I talk? You and David, city attorney? Yeah, like I was saying, Mr. President, but, uh, I was, uh... Hey, and to get there to his meeting, peoples around this city, having me in the U of N college, but they act like, told me stay in the car, but the whole day be going by for, I had to leave and catch the bus to get here 'cause they forget peoples... I'd be glad when, uh, the police chief get, what he was talking about all last week about... They might, they killed my attorney Robertson over there, and I, I think he getting ready to catch him all who did this junk. I'll figure that out, but... Oh, there he is, back there. Dude, uh, man, come up to the front. I mean, I mean, uh, man, what's up with you, man, making a face at an ass? That's what I'm talking about, man. You, uh, I mean, President, I mean... Hey, I want to let somebody else have my, one minute 'cause you up, you up there trying to do me like Mays, uh, talking about all that, doing all them old stuff, but Mays is gonna check you better than that. But I could check you better than Mays could. But people be talking about using them so-called... Man, you little giant boy looking face walk on the pr- maybe, I ju-
Thank you, uh, Mitchell. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Ms. Diana Gill. Ms. Gill? Good evening.
My name is Diana Gill, and I live on New York Avenue. And I've been listening to a whole lot of stuff. Thank you, thank you. I've been listening to a whole lot of things concerning our community. And we have to look at the people of our community. I say do not raise taxes on the homeowners. They need a leader. And also, the infrastructure. You can tell when they're gonna do the streets 'cause you see every year these orange and white, uh, grills. Why not get something definite, like, to do the streets? And have those people that work in the wintertime save their money, like the teachers do, and then come back? Why not do that? And also, I, uh... I wonder where we were at nine one one, at nine eleven. We all started praying when that bomb, when that, they took the towers down. Where was the church and the people when prayer was taken out of the schools? We say a present lynch is to the flag, but why not give God a chance? The word is what we need. The climate of the city is down. But those that are praying, we love Flint. We have people in this community that loves being here. You can tell it by some of the houses that are beautiful. You can tell it how they, uh, they support the meetings here. I looked at the couple back there. You know, we have something to do, but we can't be greedy. Why not go to Burton and get the water? Or not Burton, Beach and get the water. Why not take taxes from the businesses to help the water system? If that's the system, that's the problem. Instead of having every corner with drugs and, and liquor stores, having four corners. If you have to drink, go to the four corners and take all of these liquor stores off the corners of Flint and make our Flint area one that wants, that portrays the love that the people have for Flint.
Thank, thank you for your comments. Your time has expired.
Thank you.
Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. Arthur Woodson. Mr. Woodson?
Good evening, Mr. Woodson.
Good evening. Uh, I'll make it short. Uh, I spoke to, uh, EPA. Uh, I spoke to, uh, EPA, uh, Region Five today. Her name was Heather Stovin. She's the violation enforcer for EPA in this region. Uh, I found out some serious information. Uh, when we are found in violation, uh, they go on a point system where they prioritize, uh, the cities or, you know, uh, the water violations. And it's eleven points. Three violation is equivalent to eleven points. But what was so upsetting to me was the fact that I asked her, I said, "What happens when they are found in violation again?" She said that MDEQ comes in. I said, "Well, how can, how can ED, uh, MDEQ come in and post, police themselves?" She had the understanding that Flint went to Flint River Water on their own. You all are not doing your due diligence. You all should have been on EPA from the start. You all need to write EPA, the city council, and let EPA, Jennifer Crooks is over this region. If you don't write Jennifer Crooks, you write Heather Stovin. And let them know that the mayor and the city council did not order or make the decision to go over to Flint River Water because in order for them to come in, they have to, uh, ta-talk to the MDEQ. MDEQ comes in, and then they enforce MDE, MDEQ. I said, I told her that we are under emergency manager, and the emergency manager made this call. And the emergency manager is an agent of the state. She did not know this. She doesn't know anything about PA four thirty-six. She doesn't know anything about that. I spoke to her again, uh, about, she didn't know. She was so confused on how Flint City put their data up online. Because we went to the, uh, while I was speaking to her on the phone, we went to the data. She didn't know that we was out of, uh, sync back in May because they didn't have any of the data. She didn't have any of the data. And like I said, she is the enforcer on violations. So I, I, I spoke to her for about an hour. And she told me to get back in touch with her next week so that she can, uh, tell me what's going on. I don't know if y'all asked Howard Croft, uh, because she said that they supposed to have... Flint was supposed to have submitted, uh, operational evaluation plan. And they supposed to have it implemented, uh, by March, she was saying. I don't know how she, uh, really meant that, but she said that she's gonna check with Jennifer Crooks and MDEQ on that also, uh, this week. So I believe that city, city, uh, council needs to call the EPA, Jennifer Crooks, and Heather Stovin and talk, speak to them and write a letter to them telling them that they did not, that you all did not make the decision to switch over to, uh, Flint River Water. She also said that-
Your time has expired.
EPA and MDEQ do not wanna be on Flint River. They recommend that we do not stay on Flint River Water.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Next speaker is Mr. A.C. Dumas. Mr. Dumas?
Good evening, Mr. Dumas.
Good evening. Uh, I just wanna say, uh, as you see, that it's community involvement that's getting a lot of things, uh, out to the, uh, public. I know on my broadcast, I try to put out as much as information as I can. I just wanna say that on this, uh, week, well, today I spoke with, uh, the leadership, Pastor Harris of the Concerned Pastors. I spoke with, uh, Leadership of Democracy Defense League, and also with ACLU and other, uh, groups of interest and residents. And I think the only way we're gonna get this water solved, 'cause we've been ha-engaging in a lot of dialogue. I usually say much to do about nothing. We know that the emergency manager's in charge, and whatever he decides, that's what happens. So I did, uh, speak with, uh, Professor, uh, of Law, retired professor of law at Ohio State University. Happened to be an African-American woman who introduced me to two environmental racism lawyers. And they looked over Flint, over what's happening in Flint, and it's a clear that it's environmental racism. And when you have a city sixty-seven percent African-American, and this is one of the tests that they do. In the Alk County, uh, it's less. And talking about water now, that our water is tainted, it's bad for the health, while other municipalities' water is good. While you have a white treasurer, while you have a white governor, while you had a white emergency manager when we switched over, they said, they felt that it's a clear case of environmental racism. And so we'll be meeting together. I've called a meeting, asked what they come and have this dialogue. I think we have to file a lawsuit in federal court regarding environmental racism. It's prevalent, it's hap, it's happening right here in Flint, Michigan. Nobody wants to say anything about it. I told you all years ago when they did all that filth and dunk, uh, Councilman, uh, Nelson over there, off Carpenter Road, the wood burning, the co, all that. And I told you years ago, that's the only where they put that pollution at. Over in the third ward, which is majority African-American. So I would hope that some of you council persons would help and buy into this, come to the meeting and join. And I think, uh, you know, it costs money, but I've talked to groups and people that's willing to... I always was taught, it's not one person giving a lot of money, but it's a lot of people giving a few dollars. We're not asking one person to give a million dollars or, or whatever. But if you get a few people, you get a thousand people, get a dollar. See, that's how, uh, President Obama won. He didn't ask everybody, on this block, "Send me five dollars." "Send me three dollars." And I think that's what it is, and we gonna have to hold the governor, and I'm summing up, the treasurer, the emergency manager, and all those that bought in to this, uh, environmental racism that we're experiencing. We'll begin with you. Listen to The Truth Shall Make You a Free Broadcast every Saturday at nine thirty. It's the hottest broadcast in the tri-colony that African-Americans listen to. And I know some of the other Americans listening to- And I know some of the other Americans listening to it too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dumas. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Pastor Alan Gilbert. Pastor Gilbert.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Freeman, and to the council, and to my beloved Councilwoman Galloway. Good to see you today, and to the entire council. I just wanted to come forth and say, on the behalf of this public meeting that's gonna take place for Uptown and that the public will have a chance to express themselves, I wanna say to the public here today that I don't recall that Uptown has done anything for the at-large community, only downtown.
Right.
And I too feel that that is a type of gentrification and racism. And I want this council to take the leadership and understand that you all are here because we have some confidence in you. And we hope and pray that you will stand up and take on downtown development. It's okay for them to bring businesses in and bring jobs, as Councilman Mays always says, about economic development and all of these things. That's good. But how many jobs are gonna go to the citizens right here that live inside the city limits? And, uh, I'm gonna hold every one of you responsible. I'm gonna be looking at you. And I'm gonna be seeing what your position will, will be on this situation. Because Uptown Development has not done anything for the north side of Flint, hasn't done anything for the south side of Flint. They don't seed in in any type of, uh, resources or donations or anything of that sort. So I want to admonish you to be careful when this comes before and you take your vote. Also, I want to admonish you as well is that at advisory meetings that we have for the water, uh, situation, it's a lot of our people suffering in this city when it comes to water. Their skin and everybody's talking about it. But it would be nice to see some of you all there besides Councilwoman Van Buren and Councilman Nelson and Councilman Mays. The people wanna know and see that you care. And because of that, that will cause you to, to take on the leadership that you should take on and lead the city. The other thing I wanna say is that this situation on this moratorium of shut-off notices and, uh, protection plans has been brought forth by Councilman Mays and Councilman Davis. I think it's very important that you consider this because this will, will bring immediate relief to the registered voters and citizens of this city. I, I can't say it enough. Uh, I, I can pay my water bill with no problem, but not everyone can do what I do. I'm not here for me, I'm here for them. Because they need the relief not tomorrow, not next week, they need it right now from you. And so I want to admonish you, as you've heard me say many times, I love every one of you. I pray for every one of you and I respect every one of you. But if you don't do right, I'm coming to see you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Chris Zawala.
Zawala.
Good evening, Councilman Freeman, President Freeman, and the rest of the council people. My name's Chris Zawala, president of Potter Longway Neighborhood Association. I've been president of that for about four and a half years now. I'm really, really, really grateful that city council's considering this vote to put money into Potter Longway Park. And I'll tell you why. Potter Longway Park butts right up to Potter School, as we know, which, there's about 250, hovering around 250 kids there. And every day, them kids use that playground. And there's only like one thing that they can play on and it gets used quite a bit. And it's pretty rundown and needs refi, needs new, we need new equipment for, for them kids to play on it. We got basketball courts there that we need to get fixed 'cause there are kids who use the basketball hoops a lot there and there's just not enough room for them. We wanna put them into the old tennis courts so there'd be more activity, there'd be more games going on. We've got a lot of things going on at Potter Longway. We just got the Krim Foundation's putting money in for new sidewalks all the way down Avril and Dexter. And I think that's a big plus in promoting health and fitness for kids to ride their bicycles to school. I think that's really great. We've got probably 10 to 20 people that walk their dogs in the park through the week and they clean up after themselves. There's not a lot of litter there. We also have the rugby players, in fact, they're gonna be speaking here too, the Flint Rogues. They use the field three or four times a week. And if they're on the field and somebody else is playing a rugby game, there's probably around 300 to 500 people on the field at that time. So Potter Longway's a very good investment for the people to put money, for this council to vote to put money into. As I said, with the Krim Foundation and the sidewalks, it'll be a pretty nice park by the time it's all done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. One last speaker?
Our last speaker is, uh, Mr. Anthony Vance. Mr. Vance?
Good evening, council. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Flint Rogues. I'm a member of the Flint Rogues Rugby Football Club, which has been in existence since 1972. Um, we're an amateur team. We play all throughout the Midwest. Um, we've hosted teams from all throughout Michigan and the Midwest as well as Canada. We have two rugby fields there at Longway Park. Uh, they are some of the premier rugby fields in Michigan. The park, in addition to the rugby fields, is an asset not only for the neighborhood, uh, not only for the city, but for Potter School and for the Flint Rogues. Uh, I would just like to express, uh, my support for the DNR application. And I would urge you to support, uh, submission of that application to the DNR for improvement of Longway Park. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our public speakers.
Mr. President?
No, we have, I think we have one back there, I think. Did they turn it in?
Did you turn in a slip?
So, the, can you raise your hand in the hat, y'all?
No, we got that covered.
Okay, okay. All right. Did you? Okay.
All right. We didn't get it prior to the start of the meeting.
I would add no objections to her speaking, Mr. President.
Can you just give your name and address for the record?
My name is Gertrude Marshall. My address is 3010 Cheyenne Street, Flint, Michigan. First, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Wantz Wes Davis and Mr. Eric Mays. They have made theyself very known to the public since we've been going through this water crisis. Um, I have one question and I have one comment. I'm starting with my comment. Although our city council don't hold too much power while the, um, the emergency manager is in office, the power that you guys do hold is being out and, out with the public, um, letting the public know that you care, letting the public know that you're there. We voted you in. And even though the state tied your hands, they didn't tie your feet. They didn't tie your feet, they didn't tie your heart. We expect to see you guys out here with us. It's very, you guys have very limited power, but y'all can still raise hell in different places. You have a title and you have a public behind you that's if you choose to do what you're supposed to do. And my only question is, have the water rates dropped at all? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that brings us now to the-
Mr. President?
-conclusion of our public speakers. We do have one issue that was laid on the table, so we would need a motion to take that off the table?
Mr. President, I move to remove from the table 150166.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, is there discussion?
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion carries, so that would leave us with 150166.
I move, uh, for approval, Mr. President.
Motion has been made as a support. It's been moved and supported, is there discussion?
What is that, um, action?
It is the submission of a grant for Longway Park improvements.
So, okay, that was the first motion was to, you know, pull it back from laying on the table and this is the action aspect of that.
Right.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Do we have roll call?
Mr. Kincaid?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no on 150166.
Thank you. Uh, that brings us then to council discussion. And as a reminder, we all have five minutes. We can start with Councilman Mays.
Councilman who?
Mays.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. I got a couple of things I wanna bring to the attention of the council. One of them is I'm getting complaints about the water in the county jail. And, um, if you think we going through stuff out here, they showing us going through some bad water situations. So I wanna make a referral to, um, the legal department, um, that I wanna see if we can look at the quality of water that the inmates in the jail is getting. And I wanna follow up on that. And if we have to send a letter to Sheriff Pecail, I'll try to talk to him myself, but I wanna make those two referrals to our legal department on behalf of complaints I'm getting and, um, see if we can send a communications to Mr. Pecail to inquire about that. Also, um, I wanna say to True, True, yeah, I will cuss. And so I'm glad that we can cuss and fuss and get through stuff, but you are right. Councilman Mays will cuss sometime, but that don't keep us from moving. Good to see you here. Um, I'll tell you what, as I listen to you, Mr. Dumas, there's some things going on in the community, um, as it relates to water and, um, litigation that you might be surprised at. And in line with that, I'm gonna put a motion on the floor and we gonna see what happens. And it's in line with what you said, True, and it's in line with what you said, Mr. Woodson. It's an action step. And that action step is to see what type of power we got. But before I move that motion, I'm asking one of my colleagues to join me because we need to have a special council meeting between now and April the 8th. And I wish the mayor was here because I wanna see if the mayor is ready to take a serious look at Public Act 436 because six council persons and the mayor can take action before we go to a transition advisory board. And so I'm asking for one of my colleagues to come to me because I've seen special meetings and I wanna see who will help call one and show up as it relates to the legal language that we met on Antioch with, with Pastor Bullock. And I wanna see if we'll do that in a timely manner. I move that we do all things necessary to go back to Detroit water. And that's a motion.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Um, whether or not this turn out to be a serious action, whether we have to come up with a resolution, however we do it, this is a motion that people in the community have asked me to make. I've so made it and I appreciate Mr. Nelson giving its support to allow for discussion. And I'm here to tell you, if this motion passed, that's why I say do all things necessary, if we have to reduce it to a resolution, if we have to call a special meeting to discuss it, if we have to discuss it with Mr. Ambrose, the mayor, and anybody possible, I would even ask that the treasury and the governor's, um, office show up as well. So this motion is to do all things necessary because we have a 30 to 60-day period. The experts have said we need government approvals, we need another chemical mixture, we gotta invest some millions of dollars out on Dort Highway and/or Stewart Street to get there, and residents have suffered too long. We have not all sit idly by, but this is a motion that I was requested to make. It didn't originate from me, but I'm serving some people in some serious positions who've asked me to make this motion. And at any time, we will and can identify them. So it's some people watching and we'll see what happens. And True, we'll see what type of power we got. And, um, Mr. Nelson, I thank you for your support in this 436 experiment to try to do what we can do to get people good water. And if it happens, we're definitely gonna talk about a decrease in price. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on Councilman Mays's motion? Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no.
Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman Mays. Councilman Nelson?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Through you, to Mr. A.C. Dumas, I didn't get the time of the meeting. When is the meeting going to be?
We'll, no, Pastor Harris.
Okay, thank you. Um, I would be very brief. Um, the motion that, uh, Mr. Mays made is, is something dear to my heart. I've said from day one, um, ain't no shame in my game, we need to go back to Detroit. I've said it from day one. Give, let us go back to Detroit, give the people good, quality, clean drinking water until this KWA come. Um, you have to realize, we've got an emergency manager, uh, who's from Lansing, we've got a treasurer from Grand Rapids, and these people leave our communities, they're not from here. We live here, we stay here. I want to see the residents get good, clean, quality water, and I don't support any kind of raise. I hope the mayor don't bring a raise in the water rates. I wanna see a decrease in the water rates. I, I, I pray that that's what I'm getting ready to look at. Uh, I just see the magistrate is here, I think she's on board. She felt a little impact when she first arrived, uh, about the fees. So if it's hurting her, guess what it's doing to us? All right? I'm through, brother president.
Thank you, Councilman. We've got Councilman Davis?
Yes, um, to the, to the man, to the young man and the lady in the back about, uh, bringing water to the county jail like they do everyone else, I am very much for that because one thing I know, I am a living testament of how they treat people when they are held in bondage or subjugated to an institution which we call incarceration. And I know how bad they treat them, so I'd be even more in forefront in knowing that we should be able to bring some justice to, over to the county jail and get them some fresh, clean water. On another hand, I think this water issue, and I'm gonna be honest with you, it's become so political. You know, I think it takes the genuine initiative out of it because everybody's starting to become political with this. And when you become political with this, it makes people feel that there's no genuine initiative to resolve these issues. Unfortunately and unfortunately, I have to be considered a politician, but I do look at myself more as an elected official because I try to do things that an elected official supposed to do. Because when you get caught up in the politics, you play the game. I don't like playing the game and I really don't even wanna learn the game because I am new to this. See, when you're new, you have to learn it. I don't wanna learn it. What I suggested in dealing with something that's more feasible to us at this particular time is that we come with a shut-off protection plan for the residents who are overpaying on those water bills and who are always in fear of getting a shut-off notice. Because consumer powers give them a shut-off protection plan. We need a shut-off protection plan in the water and sewer department so that people can stop being held in fear and not knowing if they're gonna be able to have water the next month or two going down the line, especially for people that has children in their home. Because they cannot report that their water is turned off because if they do, social services of the DHS will come and take their children from them. So the word protection is the operative word that is used so that people can understand that they will always be protected if they are on a shut-off protection plan. Now, this is not talking about politics because that really eats at my heart because I see so many people is using this, and it's more an insult to injury. And it's more an insult to injury when people keep using this as a political scheme or political game to promote themselves. That's not right because this is a serious issue. People need to be placed on a shut-off protection plan and I'm gonna give you an explanation in my five minutes of what a shut-off protection plan is. We start a water advisory committee. Couple of people from a diverse community and one person from the Water Department, which would be the supervisor. People can come to the Water Department and instantly request to be put on a shut-off protection plan. If they have a five or six hundred dollar water bill that is steady on their back that they can never address, the Water Committee would do an analysis or an evaluation of a six-month pay history to find the bill that is most consistent. May it be a hundred dollars. The Water Committee brings that person in and asks them could they pay a hundred and fifteen, flat rate, every month? I wouldn't care if the bill was three hundred dollars. A hundred and fifteen dollars every month. And eventually, as time evolved, it would eventually eat the backlog, the backlog up that they could never address. Then it gets them down eventually to zero. And once it gets you down to zero, then you can either choose to get off the plan or stay on the protection plan. Now, the repercussions of you being on the plan, you can miss one payment, but you cannot miss two consecutive ones. If you miss two consecutive ones, you have to suffer the penalty. And the penalty would be, and I changed this 'cause I think this is more appropriate, to you be shut off for one year because you missed two consecutive payments. However, people should be placed on a protection plan so that they never will ever have to worry about losing their children or being shut off on their water services until we can get these water rates lower. Because that is, to me, is the most appropriate move to take right now that will bring some form of solace or relief in their lives. This is what we have to do. I'm affected by it. That's why I say we gotta stop putting a political thing into it because everybody is being political with this. People coming from out of town, people putting stuff in the paper, people visiting Flint from out of town. It's all political. We cannot create and commit to keep putting insult to injury. That's wrong. So I'm telling you from an elected official, not from a political official because I suffer from it sometime myself, that it's important that I put this motion to the floor that we are able to see what can we do on bringing some resolution by requesting that people be put on a shut-off protection plan. That's a motion. I put that on the record so that it can be where it's at. That's a motion, uh, Mr. President.
There, there is a motion on the floor. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. We've had this discussion in um, committee. And we made referrals and now it's come to a motion. And when it's a motion, I have to make my position clear. And I'll make it clear. I don't advocate that people should pay a hundred, two, three hundred dollars a month. I advocate that water, from what I see in the city of Flint particularly when it come from the river, should be at its lowest price. And that might be thirty, forty, fifty, sixty dollars a month, just as our neighbors in Davidson, Burton, and whatever. So I advocate a decrease in water rates. And I emphasize that the letter that Mr. Ambrose sent to the emergency manager when the pastors went up there and we got the analysis, Mr. Ambrose put in his own words, he could reduce rates fifty percent. And we need to bring him up here so he can show us how he can do that. But if he can't, I can show you how to decrease them fifty percent. Now, a shut-off plan...
Protection plan.
A shut-off protection plan, I have no problem with, but I don't agree with that particular protection plan. And I'm not gonna advocate that the residents I represent pay a hundred, two hundred, and another fifteen dollars to pay these high water bills if they done fell six hundred dollars behind. I'm not gonna advocate that the people who done had to get water, and some of them, I'm getting bills. I had a lady went from a hundred and eighty dollars to fourteen hundred. I had another one, three thousand dollars. I'm not advocating that they buy into that. I don't want people shut off. I said a moratorium on shut-offs, particularly while the quality is bad and we trying to get it. Now, I don't wanna amend this motion and do a substitute motion dealing with a moratorium. But I know that that particular shut-off plan, I'm not ready to vote and rubber stamp that particular plan. But I'm sensitive to Mr. Davis's theory of a shut-off plan. I just need the particulars to be worked out. And I, that would be like me amending this substitute motion and say a moratorium. And that could be done. It might get a support. It might pass, but that's what he mean by being political. Well, I am political. I'm in a political arena. I'm a politically elected official. I'll never apologize for being political. My degree is political science pre-law, Michigan State. So I'm saying to you, Mr. Davis, that believe me, my job is to politically help people. And um, I think what I might do, rather than substitute motion because you kinda boxing me in a corner, this thing wasn't ready to move my way because I don't agree with the particulars, but I agree with the theory. And I think you done moved it too fast politically based upon the way we talked and made referrals in committee meeting. And I will not be boxed in a political corner when there's other options to do the same thing.
Thank you, Councilman Mays. I've got Councilwoman Galloway.
Thank you. Um, I wanna say to um, both of my colleagues, Councilman Mays and Councilman Davis, that I think the number one priority is to bring relief to the residents. And I- I- I wanna make sure that we continue to say that we're a body of nine that requires five votes out of nine. And I, and- and you guys have to forgive me, it just seems like there's too much um, political agenda going forth instead of what is going to bring release and relief to the, to the residents. The reality is the rates are what they are right now. And even the theory that Councilman Davis is bringing brings protection whether the rates are lowered or not. And that's what people need to experience right now. The, the, the political agenda where the financial um, situation of the city is, is real. We're lacking in resources and, and we have bills that we have to pay. And so, these rates might not change. We're hoping that they do, but if they don't, the residents don't have time for us to try and figure it out before getting some release and some relief from what their bills are. And so, I- I'm just hoping that even though we don't have the logistics that we do recognize that, there needs to be something that helps the residents with the lower water bill. What I would say to the residents too is we know that high water rates and high water bills are an issue. Um, but, but even as a community, we have to be making it known immediately. We can't be waiting three and four and five months later. Any of us that do our bills, we know when we get our bills that this water bill's gonna be a problem today. So I don't have to wait for a shut-off notice. And the reason why I'm saying that is we need to bombard the Water Department. We need to bombard people today, not in five months when I got a pink slip and my water is about to be turned off. No, I'm struggling today. My bill is due on the seventh. Today is the fifth. I thought I was gonna have it on the seventh, but I don't and I know that it's gonna start a ripple effect. And so, we have to begin to do that so there can be some, some measuring tools for the city to see this is a problem. How many people is it a problem? You have to understand, we're talking about making an impact. But it's heartbreaking when you have almost a hundred thousand residents and even in one room saying we are tired of the water rates, we maybe get two hundred people in a room. We have to come out in numbers. We really do. And I wanna thank my colleagues for taking the lead on that. But you know, all the logistics and the budgeting process, that's for the city council to take hold of. But we need to see what we can do for the residents today. And so, I think, I'm very thankful for all of the suggestions that have been laid on the table. Because when you're making suggestions, it helps when you have multiple ones. And we need to stop coming against one person's recommendation and just look and see which one is the best one that benefits the residents. Thank you, President.
Mr. President?
I've got Councilman Davis and then I can come back to you.
I appreciate it and then we wrap.
The point I wanna get to, because we have to really be mindful of this, we can do this, we can do this in a short period of time of getting people protected. Only thing we have to do is consult with consumer powers and figure out how are they controlling or instituting their shut-off protection plan? We can institute that or we can adopt that into the Water and Sewer Department here. This is an issue that is going on right now that people are held in a situation where they may lose their children because their water is turned off. This is the reason why people are stealing water because they don't wanna report that their water is turned off so they won't lose their children. But when people are placed on a shut-off protection plan, it's not high water rates. You're paying a steady base payment. At one time, if your water bill is six hundred dollars, you're still only paying a hundred dollars every month. And it, and it varies. It varies on what you will pay. They're gonna do a six-month analysis to see what your water bill is. And then they're gonna look and see what is the most consistent one. And they're gonna build a number around the consistent one. The problem that people are having is not about the water bill at, at a whole. And it is, but it's the back luggage that they cannot get over. And let me give you one little example and then I'm gonna end it. A person get a five hundred dollar water bill. Two months later, 'cause that's when you normally get a shut-off notice, they get a two hundred and twenty dollar water bill, a shut-off notice. They go pay the two hundred and twenty dollar shut-off notice. Two months later, it's back up to five hundred, which means they never got rid of the two hundred and eighty dollars. The two hundred and eighty dollars is always hangling in their life like a cancer. How do they ever get rid of the two eighty so that they can get back at point zero? So we figure it out. Shut-off protection plan. Every month that you pay is eating that up. So you can get rid of that. Get rid of that back luggage. Get rid of that. And then we go back to point zero. Then some people say, well, I'm on my feet now. I don't have nothing hanging over my head. I don't have a, a cancer. I've finally been administered chemo. So now I can move forward. Then we work on, 'cause we can do this instantly. Then we work on lowering the water bills. The water bills need to be lowered yesterday. I had a discussion with former Judge Washington who has a lawsuit in the federal courts. And some of his lawsuit is based on the water service charge, which he claims is illegal. I didn't get off into the semantics about him or the leg- the legal aspects of it, but I believe him to be telling the truth. So if we got rid of the water service charge, that would drop it instantly. But for the time being, like today, so people will not be in fear of losing their children, we need a shut-off protection plan. We don't keep getting caught up in the word semantics because now it becomes political. High water rates, water rates is too low, too high. No, we need people to feel like they are protected. Everybody wanna feel protected. Everybody do. My wife, my grandchildren, me, us, that's why we got public safety. You can never get rid of the word "protection." Everybody wants some form of protection. So why not add "protection" into your water service charge? So people can stop being in fear that next month, they won't have no water to give their children and then a month after that, their children will be taken from them. Too much of a stress. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Davis. I've got Councilman Mays.
Yeah, Mr. President and to the council and to the public, we had this discussion in committee. We usually form and make law and legislation in committee. When I do something on the floor for action because our council rules say our action is by resolution and/or um, ordinance and things of that nature. So what I'm saying is this, when you hear me make a motion to do all things necessary to go back to Detroit, whether it's special meetings, whether it's so forth and so on, that's the motion that I made in line with how we operate. The motion that I heard here was specific as to a specific shut-off plan. Now, I'm here to tell you, I have no problem supporting something or doing things, doing all things necessary whether it includes special meetings or whatever. But I know the reality of our rules and I know the reality of a motion that say do all things necessary whether it's special meetings to come up with a plan that we come upon and agree upon. And so that's why I'm struggling with this because I thought we was moving in the right direction when we took action and moved it in committee. Now I'm out here and I know what it is. So when you look at some of the other things we said in committee, we said, deal with the um, income exemption certificate, Mr. Del Maroni, 'cause it could knock off the fifty-seven dollar service fee and in fact, lower the rates for people who don't own property, renters and others. And that would knock fifty-seven dollars off and they might not get shut off when their water bill is not a hundred dollars, but is rather thirty-nine dollars. So that's why I'm saying, we debating right now if we gonna vote yea, nay, or abstain. And people will frown if they don't understand our rules. And that's why I worded my mo- motion to do all things necessary, whether it's to reduce it to a resolution, whether it's to have a special meeting. This motion ain't even worded right for a minute. Box me in. And so, Mr. President, if I may, because how I vote on this is gonna reflect in the public eye. If I was to hear a motion, I'm gonna make a substitute motion. I will move that we do all things necessary in order to come up with a um, shut-off protection plan. Now that I can go for. And if we do all things necessary, that mean if we meet tomorrow and reach a meeting of the minds.
So we got a motion on the, we've got a motion on the floor. Let me restate the motion so that I'm clear with what you've asked. All things necessary to come up with a shut-off protection plan. Uh, is there support for that motion? Is there support? Hearing none, that motion um, fails for lack of support.
Then what I would say, Mr. President...
Which brings us back to the original motion of Councilman Davis's.
So what I would say, Mr. President, that specific plan dealing with what we've discussed, what I knew we were headed to, I probably won't deal with it because I don't think in reality it's gonna be what I want. I don't understand it. It's not gonna get the discussion out in here on the floor. I ain't even looked at it as an action step. So I just can speak for me. And if my, if the people I represent...
Councilman Mays? We got your point. You're not supporting it, we understand.
If the people that I represent got a bill for six hundred dollars, I don't want them paying a hundred and sixty all year round to pay that ridiculous bill. all year round to pay that ridiculous bill. And so I can't support that right now.
And if there's no further discussion, we're going to call for the roll.
Okay, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
No.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mace?
Abstain.
You have to give a reason for the abstention.
Beg your pardon. I abstain, because the details hasn't been discussed, and I refuse to vote yea or nay on something out on the floor that I can't have the time to discuss back and forth in committee. And/or, we can do it on the floor, but seem like the President want to move, so I abstain, because the details ain't clear at this time. Thank you.
The vote then is six yes, one no, and one abstention.
Motion passes. All right, that was Councilman Davis. I've got Councilman Winfrey.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
You know, I came to this legislative body on January the 5th, and I took an oath that encapsulated the understanding that I would make decisions that would be good for the welfare of the people of this community. And since I've been here, I've heard agents of the state and others talk about financially prudent decisions, which means something to me. But when I see a few, quite a few decisions, too many to be comfortable with, of knee-jerk decisions, that seems to me to hurt the city, such as switching to the Flint River water in the first place, ratifying contracts before we hear from consultants that have been paid an extreme amount of money, hearing from Councilman Kincaid's really disturbing view of, and mine as well, of buying trucks, or renting trucks, or leasing four trucks from dealerships out of this city, when we know that Flint is a GM town. That really bothers me, and I look for the day when we do take over and have home rule again. Now, having said all of that, and I'm wrapping up, my colleague said something in committee that makes good sense to me. He said that we're getting ready to, regarding Resolution 150, I believe it's 15201. When I looked at the details of that, I saw where we're getting a grant for an excess of $1.6 million, and we're gonna tear up some streets, tear up streets from, I believe it's Stewart Street to Carpenter Road. I think, when I see that kind of stuff, I'm glad about that, because that mean that the city's infrastructure is being taken care of. But Councilman Mace said something about, well, wait a minute, when we get ready to tear up this thing, there is some infrastructure up under there that we probably need to do some due diligence on, so that we don't have to go back in and tear it up again. And I just want to say, I think when we look at that, and I know some of us have some issues with how lengthy Councilman Mace talked, but I look past all that, and I look at what he is saying, and I just want to say to this body that I think that that makes a lot of good sense, to make sure that whenever we tear that street up, we do whatever we need to do under there, so that we don't have to go back in. And even if the money that we get, or that we receive for this project is grants, we still need to be financially responsible for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Galloway?
Thank you. When we talk about, and I wasn't on the council when the decision was made for the city to go to the Flint River, it sounded, from what I understand, that there was some debate about it. And I got this from a council person, so I'll just repeat what was told to me, that originally, when the council person made a suggestion to see if the Flint River was a viable source of water, it was said that, no, the things that would be necessary to bring that water up to where it needed to be to service the residents wasn't available. And only the council people that were on here, Councilman Freeman, Councilman Kincaid, can confirm or not, but was told that, no, the Flint River is not a viable source. You either choose between KWA and Detroit Water. And so it was taken out of the equation. Well, once the, of course, at the time when they were given what the cost would be, it was said that the increase would, Detroit would be somewhere between 5% and 12% every year. And so when you look at those type of increases, you got KWA, which is probably gonna, hopefully gonna be a great source, but of course, it's a commodity, and Councilman Mace said it, water is the new gold, because water is not a want, it's a need, it's a necessity, it's a basic right that we have as people. And so the person that controls the water per se, really controls a lot. And so when the decision was made that, when you look at those type of increases, KWA was the answer to everything. They were going to be the reason why rates would remain consistent, and people would not experience an increase. As a new council person, I came on, we got the water rate study, and it said, for the next five years at least, there's going to be a 6% increase every single year. And I came up before and asked Mr. Ambrose, I said, wait a minute, one of the reasons why the people went away from Detroit was because we were supposed to be saved from those increases, and that didn't happen. Well, once KWA was chosen as the water source, as you know, the city of Flint online for about $100 million of a $300 million bill, as soon as that decision was made, all of a sudden, KWA was a viable source. And you need to understand, people can talk about politics, I'm not saying it wasn't politics, I'm not saying it was. But what I'm saying is, it was, the Flint River was taken off the table, so that you could be forced into a corner to choose KWA, and then the Flint River does become viable, because let them tell it, we're gonna save so much money if we go to the Flint River, and then we can prepare to when KWA comes in. And everything but that has happened. We're still getting increases. And the reason why I say that is because people were trying to educate me during that process. There was an older gentleman that saw it in the paper, and he was concerned about it. All he wanted to do is say, hey, I need enough signatures so that we can put this KWA decision on hold, so we can make sure that this is really the best decision for the residents of the city of Flint. And I'm telling you, this old man knocked on my door, saying, help, please help. But you know what? Nobody wanted to hear it. And what happens is, we have to become an informed group of people. And what happens is, a lot of times, and I'm guilty, we find ourselves getting informed when our back is up against the wall, and it seems like there's not much that we can do. So now, we're fighting from a position of defense instead of offense. And I'm just saying that to say, even as we move forward on anything that we're doing, Mr. Woodson, I want to talk to you afterwards. I want to find out, because we need to figure out, who do we go to? The governor's not listening. He got elected in '14, he's got four years. And so the question, and I'm not saying anything about anybody, but you have to understand, this is the way that it goes. When you get elected, you have four years, unless you're really gonna do some petitions to pull him out. So we need to find out, can we go to the United Nations? Because the United Nations is not political driven. They're simply about human rights, and we need somebody that's about human rights, that cares about what's going on with us in our community, that is not going to be elected in November, not gonna be elected next year, that cares about what's going on with our residents. And so I just wanted to say that. I share your concern, I haven't really been on the forefront, because my colleagues are doing all of that. My thing is, who do we call in the United Nations? Who governs the governor? What do we do when Governor Snyder's not listening to us? I don't have any quarrels with him, but who regulates him? He can come into the city of Flint and say, you're not doing well, I'm putting an emergency manager over you that's gonna watch over you, but who watches over him? And so, please hear my heart, I share your struggles, bottled water, and I'm a Dasani girl, and so $5 a case, and we go through it like nobody's business. And so I share your concern, and I'll work as hard with you as I can on this issue. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Van Buren?
If I may, a point of information. We were on the council when Mr. Early made the decision to push the button and go to the river. We didn't make the decision, but am I right that we was on the council when the button was pushed and others made the decision to go to the river?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to get into a debate about it.
I just want to write information out for.
With you or Councilwoman Galloway, but I was on the council when we voted to go to KWA.
No, we were talking about the river.
I'm not done, just a second. When we voted to go to KWA, and the discussion at that time about the Flint River, was that it was not a viable long-term option, that it was a viable short-term option, and that's because of the way that Holloway is constructed out there, and sediment in Holloway, and that if we were to get a situation where we had a drought situation, that there was not enough water in our reservoirs to, number one, provide drinking water, and then also to have enough flow to go down the Flint River, so that we could discharge our waste out on Beecher Road in a safe manner. Because the regulations by the federal government now about the amount of flow in the river and discharging waste into it are different than they were when the city used the Flint River as a full-time drinking source. So council, council didn't vote to use the Flint River. When we voted to go to KWA, Detroit gave us one year and told us, we're canceling your contract. And that's why we ended up going to Flint Rivers, because Detroit told us they were canceling our contract with us. And on that night, at midnight, the water people from Detroit were at that valve, ready to shut that valve off, and they actually wanted to cut the line, supplying water to us. So it wasn't solely a decision, the city of Flint's decision, it was a decision by Detroit as well, cutting us off. And if I remember correctly, I think there were some people that maybe even serve on this council that were trying to get petitions signed, so that we could look at the Flint River versus going with KWA, if my memory serves me correct, but I might be wrong. Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yes, thank you. There was something that Councilwoman Galloway said that I think is very important to all of us, and that is to get informed. We need to stay informed, and it's either through radio's programs, not talking specifically one particular station, also the media, the newspapers, at meetings, at this type of meeting like you're at. And it's gonna be more important meetings coming up, especially as we enter April. I don't know if you realize, the emergency manager is scheduled to leave, then what? Then a lot of responsibility will be on council. And what will happen? Do we really know? Next Tuesday, there will be a public meeting held, and it says Flint, after the emergency manager getting back to local control. This is a public meeting. I think as many people need to be there to hear, hopefully you'll be able to ask questions. It says, join us for discussion on emerging from state control. And it is put on by the League of Women Voters and the Flint Area Public Affairs Forum. It starts at 5:30 till 7:30, that is next Tuesday, that is the last day of March. April is when Mr. Ambrose will be leaving. I don't remember the exact date, if it was the middle or end of April, but then what? You know, we keep saying, okay, we can't do this, we can't do that. Pretty soon, it will be in our hands, where we will be able to do some things. So what's gonna happen? Who knows what the game is at that time? And I think we need to be out there as community, as residents. The panelists will be the mayor, City of Flint, Mayor Walling, the president of city council, Josh Freeman, and also the vice president of city council, Mr. Montez Davis. So these are.
And also Natasha Henderson will be on that panel as well.
Oh, left her name out. But again, these are key people that hopefully can give us some answers. So I invite you out to it for the Flint Public Library. I really wanted to express that, but we have to get informed any way that we can. Also coming up is a number of zoning workshops. We are gonna have new zoning ordinances, that's gonna affect all of us in all our wards. And there will be a specific zoning workshop in each ward already scheduled. The first one will be Thursday, April 9th, for Ward 6. And that will be at the Catholic, that doesn't seem right. That will be at Calvary United Methodist Church on Flushing Road, I think right near DuPont there. But there is, if you can find one of these, I'm sure it'd be in the paper on the website, it has a location for each ward. But Ward 6 will be the first one. It doesn't go in order, but it's open to the public. And if you can't make it for your ward, go to one of the other ones, to see what they're talking about. Because what happens in one ward may be different than what's gonna happen in another. It depends what the makeup of your ward is, and what's going on through the master plan. This is what it's based on, is the activities of the master plan. So if it's going to be a certain type of neighborhood, if it's going to be a certain type of business corridor, you need to be familiar with those zoning ordinances are going to be, because there will be a number of changes. And it may not be as easy to understand. It isn't gonna be five changes, it's gonna be more than that. So we need to educate ourselves, we need to get informed. So when we don't want it to happen, we need to speak up and say that, because this is the time to make changes and adjustments, before it gets adopted by city council. So I guess I'm giving you some homework, and to look for, stay informed, find out what's going on. We are going to have a very busy year, and I hadn't even talked about the budget yet. So again, you know, if there's ways we can get information to you, if you're not sure where some of this activities are going on, you know, call the departments also and ask them for that information. Thank you.
Point of information for one-tenth of a second. If you guys can remember, I wrote two letters to the United Nations, and I sent those letters to them every week, back when I was protesting in the summer. And I just wanted to make that reference to my council person, Ms. Galloway. Ron MLive, no, because I put it in the, and they put it in the MLive. So I wrote the United Nations a few times, trying to get them to address the human rights. So I just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware that I did write to the United Nations several times. Okay, you're welcome.
Councilman Kincaid?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I concur with my colleagues on the water issue. I just wish the Court of Appeals would issue their ruling on my lawsuit, so that it would bring some relief to the residents. It's been a long lawsuit. We argued at the Court of Appeals on January the 7th, and I'm waiting for their decision on behalf of the residents of the city of Flint. I sued that the emergency manager illegally raised the water and sewer rates, and also the fee. And so if the court rules in our favor, we will all see some relief. But I'm gonna switch gears, and I'm gonna go back and talk about what I started to talk about the other day, that is just a very irresponsible act by the emergency manager, both Darnell Early and currently Mr. Ambrose, who neither one live in Flint, who neither one really care about the people of this community, nor do they care about the businesses and the men and women who work here. I personally took it upon myself, because they did a sole-source vendor on a lease with Enterprise, to go down to Applegate Chevrolet, which I have never done in the 29 years that I've been on city council, to dispute or to look at a purchase or a lease of a product for the city of Flint. I always felt that it was potentially a conflict of interest on my behalf, but I did it because the city did a sole-source with Enterprise. And I want to talk, first of all, about the seven equinoxes that the city has leased from Enterprise compared to a lease from Applegate Chevrolet right down the street, that pays property taxes, every employee there pays income tax to the city of Flint, and they have provided vehicles to the city of Flint for the 29 years that I've been on city council. But let me just give you a real quick breakdown. And this is based on a cost comparison from Enterprise that the city has entered into, and a lease agreement from Applegate Chevrolet that would come through on a leasing program from General Motors that they were never contacted and asked about. A down payment for a Chevy Equinox at Applegate Chevrolet is $241 compared to $684 at Enterprise. The lease cost per month is $206 at Applegate's and $351 from Enterprise. There's no maintenance cost at Applegate's, because the Chevy Equinoxes are under a 36,000-mile warranty and a three-year maintenance agreement that is all. and a 36, or a three-year, um, maintenance agreement that is all under warranty. Enterprise is charging the city of Flint $37.57 every month that the city has an Equinox and pays a maintenance fee while these vehicles are under a warranty. The total lease for the, the city of Flint, if they were to have gone through Applegate's, would have been $206 a month compared to $388.88 a month from Enterprise. Enterprise is charging the city a $350 service charge for each vehicle, and no one at Applegate's could figure out why there would be a $350 service charge. They would charge the city no service charge. The city of Flint, through Enterprise, is paying $28,576.90 to lease a Chevy Equinox compared to Applegate's for the same time period, 60 months, of $14,000, $14,047 for the same time period. Twice as much to lease a Chevy Equinox from Enterprise than what it's costing to lease it from a dealer right down the street. And also while I was there, of course, you know, I'm really disturbed about the city, um, leasing Ford F-250s when we build the number-one Chevy Silverado in GMC right over on Vanslake with over 2,500 employees that work there, all of them paying income tax with a company that's investing $600 million in a facility and has paid more than $500,000 in building permits and inspection fees to our general fund so far this year, not counting all the other taxes that they give. But while I was there, I didn't have time to have them figure out a lease. But they, Applegate's gave me a purchase order from Genesee County Road Commission. Genesee County Road Commission bought six 2015 Chevrolet Silverado, 2,500 four-wheel-drive pickup trucks at a cost of $25,630. We are leasing a Ford F-250 for $26,422.60. More than $1,000 to lease the Ford F-250 than to buy a Chevrolet Silverado from Applegate Chevrolet right down the street. And the other thing that I think was really important about this purchase that, uh, Applegate gave me, that the Genesee County Road Commission, um, did, every one of their vehicles have a snowplow prep package. And, and as you know, that leasing these tractors in the city of Flint last winter, part of this winter, we had spent over, we have spent over $150,000 to lease seven tractors. We've already given them back, and we plowed the streets one time, and the blades didn't even go all the way down to the concrete. So the real issue with me is, uh, Mr. President, is I think we need a professional fleet manager to manage our vehicles in the city of Flint. And it was appalling to me that Mr. Applegate would walk up to me and say, you know, Scott, GM has a financial leasing program for municipalities. And we didn't even ask them to participate in this program. So the bottom line to me is that we don't have anyone that can manage our fleet in the city of Flint. A good fleet manager that we used to have, Mr. Crockett, who had McGilvery Buick over on Avril, when, when he come to work for the city of Flint, he was absolutely a professional fleet manager. He had a plan that he put in place that we would, uh, purchase vehicles, we would get them outfitted and equipped for the use that best fit the city's needs. We would keep them three to four years, and then we would take and we would auction them off when the residual value of each one of those vehicles were at its highest. Our fleet manager has vehicles in his fleet that are more than 10 years old. He has 14, 14 plow trucks, underbody plow trucks, standard axle, uh, plow trucks that we use for the city of Flint. And at no given time this winter, at no given time, did we have more than seven trucks able to plow the streets and salt the streets in the city of Flint. And we're buying Ford F-250 pickup trucks, and we don't have enough, and we didn't have enough equipment to plow the streets in the city of Flint. We had to go lease tractors for more than $150,000. Mr. President, this is a very-
Your time has expired, Councilman.
This is a very, very deeply rooted problem in the city of Flint. And if we have to get it corrected when the emergency manager leaves, I would hope that I would have support from my colleagues, the mayor, and the administrator to send these leased vehicles, every one of them, back to Enterprise, put out a bid, Genesee County, Applegate Chevrolet, which is the only dealership located in the city of Flint, and solicit the company and support the men and women that work in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Mr. President?
I, I haven't had an opportunity to speak yet.
Okay.
If, um, if you allow me that. Um, I just wanted to put on the record that, you know, I'm not opposed to your plan, the idea of your plan, Councilman Davis. But until I can see actual details of what that looks like, I'm not gonna vote to move forward with it, and that was the reason for my no vote. That concludes the council discussion portion. And Councilman Mays?
Yeah, Mr. President.
If you, if you can do it in under two minutes?
I don't know.
We'll, we'll move forward with you. But if you can't do it under two minutes, then we'll-
You'll determine that. Mr. President, what I'm concerned about, because remember, these rules that we working under is the old Darnell Early ruse. When Mr. Kincaid talks about that, he's been talking about it three, four meetings. I don't like to just talk, and I don't care nothing about Darnell Early's ruse. And I don't work to try to get for Monday, emergency manager tomorrow. I work like I'm a councilman yesterday, today, and tomorrow. When you see something like that, Mr. Kincaid, and to this council, the charter tells us that we ought to get good information. In Highland Park, they found out that the emergency manager had just spent money, and he had to pay $150,000 back or so. When I see deals like this, and it's that plain, I don't know who might have been getting a little cheeky change here or there, whatever. It just raises a question. The charter makes me say, any business I can get to the truth upon the oath. And so any business pending before us. Now, you were the president when Mr. Early did this in October, and I remember seeing the paperwork come through my desk. So I wouldn't care if Mr. Early was here. I subpoena him, I subpoena him back from Detroit and tell him to explain the decision. Because under the charter, we got the right to subpoena him, Enterprise, and Mr. Applegate. Because my issue ain't the fleet manager. My issue is getting to the bottom of why people would make a decision that costs the city money. So, Mr. Kincaid, you know, I retired from Flint Truck and Bus. I done built trucks, and I was a committee man and member of Local 598. So I'm an advocate of entrepreneurship. Whenever a issue seemed this clear, I don't want to just talk about it. I want to try to do something about it, and I want to see if we can do something yesterday. And I got ideas on how to make a move to get to the bottom of this when we can throw these rules out the window and get to business.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ain't no such thing.
I, I-
Mr. President?
I believe, just, just a second. I believe, ma'am, 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 can you please? Ma'am, can you please take your seat? Ma'am, ma'am, I'm, ma'am, ma'am, I'm gonna rule you out of order and ask you to take your seat. If you, if you continue, if you continue on, ma'am, what I'm going to do is ask that you- I'm gonna, if you, if you're gonna persist in disrupting this meeting, you're gonna be in violation of Flint City Code 31-12.
True, true, let it go.
Disorderly conduct and disorderly presence. And we'll be subject to arrest for a misdemeanor.
I move a motion to adjourn.
This is your final warning to stop disturbing the meeting.
We are right.
I move a motion to adjourn.
I've got a motion on the floor.
Mr. Kincaid had some.
I just want to make one point, Mr. President, I think is very important.
Thank you.
Mr. Mays made a comment that this resolution come across his desk October 27th. The date on this resolution is October 27th. They never released this resolution until I found out that they had these trucks over in the motor pool. This resolution, along with some other ones, were stuck in a drawer purposely so that we wouldn't know they bought or leased these vehicles. This, this resolution, Mr. President, was not revealed until I and Mr. Fonger asked the city administrator where was the resolution, and they found it hid in a drawer. And that's the truth.
What month was that, Scott? Do you recall?
Call the question.
I had seen it seem like before then.
Is there a motion on the floor?
It came across our desk.
There's been a motion, and it's been supported as a further discussion. Can we have roll call, please?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
No.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is seven yes, one no.
Hey, I seen that resolution before.